All right, guys, 6:00 PM. So let's get started with our agendas for this evening, just to give you an over, a recap of what we're going to try to expect here tonight. First thing would be the City Council Budget Workshop. This will be session number one. I'll defer to our Chair of Finance Committee, Mr. Reynolds, at appropriate time. But once we're through with the overview, however long we're going to go there, or have something like that, then we will reconvene into an executive special called council meeting for council to consider a couple of executive sessions. And if it's their pleasure to go into that, we'll go into those next sessions, probably take an hour or so. And then we'll come out of that, and that'll be the end of the evening officially. From that standpoint, so if all members of council are present, including myself, along with our seat administrator, Mr. Madden, various members of staff. With that, Mr. Reynolds, you can have the hang on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues for coming and sitting through what's going to be a lot of numbers and probably a lot of minutia, but an important part of what we do.
Remind everybody to turn the mics on. I forgot.
Mine is on. I always hear the reverb. Yeah, so first thing I wanted to point out is within the packet that you received, you guys remember, I brought this up during the last council meeting, and that is the distinguished budget presentation award that the city received for last year's budget. I think based on the depth of this budget, we're probably going to be in the running for that award again. It's well presented as it is presented now. But I did want to thank the department heads who made it out tonight. Again, this is your first budget workshop, so it'll be much more of an overview. In the past, Mr. Madden and I have done basically an overview, a 30,000-foot view of what the budget is right now, where we're looking to go with it. And then when we get into our next budget workshop, we'll get into more specifics with department, each specific department, as well as if we have time to get into the capital side of it. But this side, we wanted to be very brief. I say that, and Mr. Madden present has a PowerPoint. So I don't know that we've ever done a PowerPoint, Mr. Madden, have we? I do want to draw your attention to the budget calendar. This is our first budget workshop, March 10th. Our next one exactly two weeks from today, so March 24th. Make sure you go ahead and have that on your calendars. Ms. Miller will send out another invite so that we all know about that. And last thing I'd say, I said during every workshop that we start with, I believe this is probably the single most important thing that we do as a council. What you have before you is presented from staff, but not staff's responsibility. It's ours. So what we charge our staff with is to build the best possible budget they can with the goals that we set forth. And if in this, we don't believe it meets those goals, then it's our responsibility to change it, our responsibility to go to staff and our administrator and work out how to make the budget fit what our long-term goal for the city is. So all that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, members of council. Want to share screen? So I'm gonna walk through what's essentially in your budget book, the budget that's being recommended for the upcoming fiscal year. The budget as recommended in the aggregate totals about $42.7 million. That's a slight decrease from last year's budget. The budget is balanced, requires no tax increase, no millage adjustment or any fee increases, and it really serves as an efficient plan for providing services to the residents of the city. In developing the budget, staff really focused on the capital improvements, looking at investments that council can make for the city's future. As I mentioned, there were no changes to the tax level. There were a number of budget considerations and factors that went into the development of the budget. Future revenue growth is the first. The general fund, which funds most of the city's operations, really continue to only show a modest rate of growth. And that's really reflective of the flat growth that we're seeing with the property taxes that are generated and remitted to the city every year. We projected a 3% increase overall for the city's budget, really about a 2% increase in general fund dollars. So really modest there. Staff also looked at the economic indicators. The city's unemployment rate is starting to get to pre-pandemic levels at 2.7%, which is less than the nationwide average right now, about 4%. Since 2010, the city's population steadily has increased. Census, the 2020 census as compared with the 2010 census, about 8%. We expect that to continue. There's been significant increase in the residential development and construction in the city, as well as industrial and commercial. So while the city's economy continues to recover from the onset of the COVID pandemic, inflation is at a 10-year high, 7%, and it's not really projected to change much this year, although we're hoping that that drops as well. We also want to make sure that the budget was balanced and maintained the fund balance health. As recommended, there's no usage of the city's unassigned fund balance. Really focused on making sure that recurring revenues were spent for recurring expenditures as opposed to one-time costs. Most of the one-time revenues are focused really solely on the capital improvement program. Also want to maintain the current service levels and make sure there are no reductions as presented. We don't see any reduction to the city's current service levels. Another factor into the budget is the state mandate of pension costs. It's still going up. They've been going up every year since 2018, fiscal year 2018. This year is going up 1% again, and so we budgeted for that as well. We also looked at the end of the year outlook for this current fiscal year. To date, we see that we're either meeting the expected expenditures or below the expected expenditures for the end of the year. So we're well within our budget parameters for this fiscal year, and that bodes well for looking at this next fiscal year, 2023. And also, we're seeing a continued recovery from the impact of COVID. Most of the market-driven revenue sources, hospitality accommodation taxes, business licenses, construction permits, things that were adversely impacted by the onset of COVID. We're seeing those get back to pre-pandemic levels, which bodes well. However, it's still a wait-and-see period to see how that recovery continues, especially given the rate of inflation and the way that COVID impacted the work environment. You see a lot of office and retail space that would normally fill prior to the pandemic. Even as we, the economy improves and we creep closer to pre-pandemic numbers, we're not seeing the immediate jump back into the workplace in the private sector. But we're still looking to keep our hospitality and accommodation revenue projections flat for this upcoming fiscal year. Also, a factor into developing the budget was the council priorities, healthy living, economic prosperity, organizational excellence, infrastructure improvement, and strategic As staff developed the budget, we had some guiding principles that really underscored the approach in developing the budget. Wanted to make sure that we were conservative in our revenue and expenditure projections, really focusing on the essential public services and the health, the long-term health and fiscal house of the organization. Wanted to maintain that fund balance strength. We didn't, focused on not increasing millage rates using only the available revenue sources. Wanted to make sure that we were able to continue investing to the workforce and also into our infrastructure facilities and fleet. Walk through some of the noteworthy expenditures. This chart, this graph here in front of you really illustrates a projection of what we saw our revenue growth for the general fund. As you can see, over the past three fiscal years, it's grown, but only modestly. We only saw, we only projected out 2% increase for this upcoming fiscal year. Some of the initiatives in the recommended budget, continuation of transitioning to automated trash service, there's funding in the capital improvement plan for two-side loading trash trucks. Also, there's a 3%, up to 3% merit increase citywide to continue investing in the city's personnel. Also continuing the replacement of the patrol fleet. So last year was the first year of a three-year replacement plan. Want to continue that the second year in replacing the fleet. As recommended, the budget includes increased staffing, three new full-time positions, one police officer position, a theater program director, and a custodial position. Also, there's an investment into the infrastructure. There's over $1.7 million invested through the CIP to city-owned roads and to sewer and stormwater infrastructure improvements. Looking to our existing facilities and parks, there's over 250,000 there budgeted to enhance our city facilities and its parks. And also, there's $20,000 in seed funding that was put into a newly established bridge maintenance fund. Construction of the pedestrian bridge, preliminary construction has commenced now. And once that bridge is complete, the city will be responsible for maintaining that bridge. And so this fund will have resources charged there so that when those maintenance expenses occur, there's a funding source that's already dedicated to take care of. So we start putting the balance in there now, you build a fund balance up in the bridge Just walk you real quickly through the budget, starting off with just the overall budget summary. As you can see from the table there, although there's not an overall, really an overall change in the budget from as proposed for this year or for next year as compared to this year, there are decreases in the capital fund, debt service fund, and enterprise fund. And I'll walk you through those. This is a summary of the revenues. As you can see, the city's budget is comprised of multiple sources of revenue. One of the reasons why there's an increase in the revenue for intergovernmental funds because this budget budgets the ARPA funds that the city is slated to receive this upcoming This is a summary of the expenditures for this year. There was an increase, not in the expenditure, as compared to last year. Most of that increase that you're seeing are expenditures related to the use of ARPA funds that the city, that the city is, will be receiving in October of this year. Over 60% of the city's expenditures are for police, fire, public works, and capital needs. And that'll be a recurring theme as you go through the CIP and look at the department budgets, those three departments are the majority of your funds are being allocated Looking at the general fund, as I mentioned, we didn't see much of a projection, at least an increase in what we projected. Most of the growth there in the general fund is really from property taxes. That's there. As I noted, the general fund will not utilize any of this fund balance to balance the budget, strictly existing revenues there. This is a 10-year projection of the general fund. As you can see, expenditures are projected to exceed revenues every year. And typically, what happens during the budget development process is balance. So departments will submit budget requests, and typically that exceeds the amount of revenue that's available. And so from there is going through and making cuts to balance the budget. Most of the expenditures projected out are what you would see is mandatory expenses related to personnel, cost, increased cost, insurance cost. Those things steadily go up every year, and sometimes they go up faster than your revenue. Enterprise fund, so the city has two enterprise funds, your sewer system is a enterprise operated as a business, as well as your property management fund. There were decreases on both sides in fiscal year 2023. The sewer fund, sewer department, that's related to a rural infrastructure grant. This year, the department received a grant for improvements to sewer basin. And so next year, that hasn't been budgeted because the grant, it hasn't been received. So that's the reason for the decrease there. Decrease in the property management fund is related to the termination of a lease of the Healy Brown building. Those revenues that the city normally would have received not be received for next fiscal year. That's why there's a decrease there. This is a 10-year projection of the enterprise fund, similar to the general fund. The expenditures are looking to exceed the revenues. And so what happens every year is there's a, looking at what can be done with the available revenues versus the expenditures that are there and making sure that the baseline of services are able to be provided in the sewer department and with our property management. Special revenue fund is for revenues that are dedicated to a specific service. So they're collected and dedicated to specific expenditures. They only can be expended for a specific purpose. And so that's what you have here. The major increase over our special revenue funds, really twofold. The first is the ARPA funds are held in your special revenue fund, which is why you have an increase there. And the modern public facilities fund, those are the installment purchase revenue bonds for the fire station and the pedestrian bridge. The way they're structured, they have to, they're no longer held in the debt service fund, they're placed in the special revenue fund. And so that's why you see those increases from last year of this current year to the next fiscal year. This is a 10-year projection of the special revenue funds. It's a little different than the other ones in that your revenues exceed your expenditures. And really, your hospitality accommodation tax fund is healthy. And typically, the expenditures that the city sees every year significantly less than the revenues that come in. Doesn't mean those revenues aren't funded every year, but you typically have a gap The debt service fund is where the city pays its debt. So it's really charged with whatever the debt service is. Over the past two fiscal years, the city hasn't issued any debt for its capital lease program, and that will continue moving forward. So if you look at the projections there, it steadily goes down after fiscal year 2025. The capital project fund is where the CIP is funded through. So it's a combination of revenues from hospitality accommodation tax fund, capital project fund balance, and ARPA funds. And so it's a combination, it's all held in that fund, and it basically funds the expenditures for the CIP. There was a decrease there from that, from the current fiscal year. That's mainly due to the expenditure of funds related to debt issues. So for example, the $2.7 million put aside for road improvements, those funds have been spent down, or they won't be going into the next fiscal year because they've been fully expended. Also, the funds have been expended for the debt associated with the pedestrian bridge. So those funds, as they get spent down, they don't get carried forward. The funds that are still remaining from those projects will be encumbered at the end of this fiscal year and move forward. This is a 10-year projection of the capital improvement fund, I mean, the capital projects fund for the next 10 years. Expenditures typically are higher than the revenues that you have, and it's normally adjusted for during the budget. So as presented, the budget is balanced. It addresses the city's current service levels, provides for some increased staffing, but it serves as an expenditure plan for this upcoming fiscal year. And that completes my presentation. This is the remaining budget review schedule. And should council have any questions? Staff, department directors are here, and I'm here as well to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. You were much more brief than I anticipated, actually. I think I allowed 30 minutes for you thinking. So in your budget book, you've got, I think going towards the front, a lot of what Mr. Madden just covered is kind of that big picture stuff. Since we have our finance director here, I think one of the things that I thought as I went through this, the numbers not only look big, but they go crazy in all of our charts. So help understanding what's happening when you see a 540% increase or a 231% increase. So Ms. Abercrombie, could you help, as we're looking at it from the non-governmental accounting background, some of the, some of the large changes, or if there's any specific, or I can just throw out the ones that stuck out to me that I thought myself and my colleagues would need some help just understanding how they get to those numbers? Any specifics from anybody? Very good. Okay, so when we go to, when we go just to budget summary, and I'm on page five in our notebook, and you probably have a chart for this, Mr. Madden. So when we're dealing with the budget summary, big picture, help me layman's terms understand from our general fund, our special revenue funds, our capital project funds. Help me understand how, when those changes drastically are as they are from one year to the next, what's causing that? And I'm just talking big picture accounting side of it.
Hold on one second, Holly. Hey, could you turn your mic on?
Um, it's Mike. The special revenue fund, the big difference is the $6 million for ARPA that's being considered this year that wasn't in the budget last year.
So we're putting that number in, so for instance, next year, we would not be looking at a $6 million?
Absolutely not.
Right.
So it'll, it'll look weird, and I'll be explaining it again to you next year saying, ARPA's not in there. Yes, exactly.
This is minus 85%.
Yeah.
Question there, the $6 million ARPA fund will be in FY 2023 because that would be the second triad, second whatever.
Tranche.
Tranche, French, whatever of ARPA. So we already got six that we spent real quick, but this is going to basically put on our books, the six we'll get next year with the opportunity to, it will be in next year's budget, but not FY 2024 unless it rains manna from heaven.
Right, Mr. Mayor, I was talking 2024, if it rains manna. So that one specifically, thank you.
Yes. And then on your capital project fund, the major decrease there is this fiscal year '22 accounted for our 2.7 million bond revenue proceeds for road paving. Those have all been pretty much spent minus about $200,000, which will be done by June 30th. So those are not in the next year's budget to be spent down.
Nothing's being carried over.
Nothing's being carried over. So that's your biggest difference in that, in that fund. Your debt service is a, is a twofold. Last year, we, we budgeted for a capital lease in fiscal year '22. We didn't have to have it, so that's not in there. We didn't use the, because we got manna from heaven, as the mayor alluded to earlier, and we didn't have to do that capital lease.
And the capital lease would have been for the police cars.
Yes, and the trash trucks. It was two. And then the other portion of that is last year, the interest for the IPRBs, which are the installment purchase revenue bonds, fire department and the bridge, were in that fund. They have to be accounted for because of wonderful accounting principles and the way the debt, the documents were set up. They have to be accounted for in a separate fund, so they have been moved out. So that's, that's why that one's a little less. And then your enterprise fund is basically just the difference of not having rent from one of the Healy Brown lease going away. And, you know, and then with everything that's planned for that, that could look totally different next year, and I'll be up here explaining that for fiscal year '24. If, if all that stuff happens and we, we sell off some stuff, but yeah, that's the main thing there is the lease.
Any questions on, on that specific budget summary? Again, those were just wild changes, so I wanted to make sure we had a clear understanding of what was happening on the financial end.
So our only lease income will be from the cabin rental.
Absolutely.
We don't know anything else.
Minus 98% there?
One final question. If we looked at the general fund, projected revenue increase next year is 3%, and the general fund expense increase is projected to be 6%.
Revenue increased by 6%.
You did a revenue.
Well, actually, the, the, let me, let me rephrase that. The general fund current revenues increased by 4%. And then in total, with other financing sources, it increased by 6%.
Additional 2%.
That's just a little bit of transfer in from ARPA and transfer in for hospitality and accommodation. That's the extra 2%. Now, our interest income actually went down because we haven't been seeing an interest
I was looking at, just from a citizen's standpoint, I wouldn't see ARPA transfers taxes and business license, those don't show the same rate of increase as projected expense side of it.
Yeah. Yeah, well, like your taxes, just they went up three percent, three point two. And then licenses and permits, which that encompasses encompasses all your business license, all your permits, and your franchise fees. Those are projected to increase four point two percent.
All the four to six thousand new homes that got coming up really won't show up.
And then another, just another big one in there, if you happen to look through in detail in your revenue page, another big one in there that'll pop out to you is a two hundred and thirty-three percent increase in garbage can fees. That is from us. And the flip side, there is an increase in the sanitation department in the container expense. Because, you know, we'll buy more, so we have them here, but, you know, we get revenue from that as well. So that's another one that went up. There's also an increase on the expense side of that as well. Be a big increase.
Again, so for this, the purpose of this meeting, I wanted it to be very thirty thousand foot view. But we have way more time than I anticipated. So I think going into it, we've talked a lot about, kind of, or Mr. Madden's talked a lot about the process of how he's gotten to this point. There's hours and hours and hours of meetings with department heads and finance directors and administrator getting the budget to a presentable point for us. But again, the onus lies on us to to have the responsibility that we have to our citizens. So with that said, if you guys would like to move forward and kind of take I think what I'd like to do for the next meeting is make sure that we, that's when we can get together, have each department head present, do more specific questions at the next meeting. But I think, again, if there's anything high level we'd like to talk about here, now would be the appropriate time. If you have questions about revenue projection, or if you have questions about big picture expenditures, is what you're reading, does it cover what we have viewed as stated goals of council? Is there goals that we need to be looking at specifically and having staff look at before we get to the next budget meeting? Mr. Madden.
Yeah, Mr. Reynolds, while you all are looking through, I wanted to bring up two things. Today, this afternoon, I received a request from the Malden Chamber for additional funding. And also, there's a request from Conestee Park for support on sponsorship. So maybe at the next workshop, council, I can email those to you so you have them. And then council could consider those two requests. The chamber's request is for a total of forty thousand dollars. What's budgeted in the presented budget for next year is the historical level amount, which of twenty-five thousand. So it would be a difference of fifteen thousand that they're looking for. And then the letter from the chamber is for additional staff to assist them in their efforts. And then the funding request from the Conestee Park group is is for sponsoring one of their events, and they have different sponsorship levels or tiers. So I'll forward that to each of you all to make sure you have it and possibly discuss that if council wants to put any money towards any one of those groups at the next budget workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. And you're saying that was forty thousand for the chamber, that was forty thousand in addition to our?
Fifteen thousand in addition to the twenty-five thousand that's budgeted.
Okay, forty thousand total.
Forty thousand total.
Assuming that our budgeting process that we started is communicated to our various.
There's nothing formally sent out to any group. The only group, I believe, that the city funds or provides funds through to its budget is the chamber.
How much did Conestee need, their request?
They had different tiers. I think it's, I don't want to misquote, I believe it started at a thousand and then went to five thousand and then another level, but I'll make sure council has those requests.
Yeah, let's just keep in mind that the city of Malden has some of the greatest park recreation facilities in the upstate. We're proud of those. They should continue to be a leading edge for our city. They do reside in the boundaries of the city of Malden, along with all our schools.
You know, to that point, Mr. Mayor, there are actually several things in there that I was glad to see. Staff on their own, Mr. Madden on his own, brought forward to help invest in the city parks. We've already had some huge investments this past year and huge investments the year before that, and continuing that trend to keep them, keep them nice and a destination for the city.
I know we've got some new blow on recreation, so I was looking forward to continuing that trend.
You're looking forward to spending all that money? I know Bart is. I'm sure. Interestingly, one of public works over the last few years has gotten all the capital stuff, it seems like. This is probably the thinnest public works I've seen in the last few years. Okay, so big picture, any questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Madden, you have any question, comment, concerns for us?
No, I do want to take a moment to thank this, all of the city employees that assisted in the dedication and commitment to the city. I want to thank each of the department directors, finance department and their staff for putting together fiscally responsive, responsible budgets and presenting those and actually sacrificing on some of the things that they could have in a perfect world to make sure that the city's budget is balanced and they're able to take care of all of their operational needs for the upcoming year. And also want to thank council and the mayor for their leadership and vision, which helped the city put together this budget to present to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. Much better said than when I was trying to say earlier on how much involvement of the staff is involved before we ever see this. We kind of get the shiny charts and graphs and the easy part of it, but there's so much, so much work that goes in long before we we get to see it. So I think from our point of view, thank you to staff and police and council's appreciation to not just your department heads, but all those who have helped with the budget moving forward. But that's all I really have for tonight, guys. I wanted to keep it simple and brief. So we have a seven o'clock council meeting. I think the last thing I'd say is if there's any council requests within what you've read or what you've heard tonight that we need to address, and again, take to Mr. Madden, now would be the appropriate time to voice those. If not, we'll look forward to the next budget workshop, which is exactly two weeks from today. And that'll be much more discussion and talk with our department heads and get over there.
First, now, this document we're looking at in our binders, would this be also for public or just for our work session?
No, it's going to be uploaded on the city's website.
And I would request a bill of access in June photograph.
You think a new one will change the look?
I want to put a tie on anyway. Yeah, Photoshop, seeing some with using TikTok.
You should definitely do that, definitely. Okay, hearing no council requests for Mr. Madden or staff, then Mayor Merritt, I'll turn it back over to you if you'd like to offer an enjoyment.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that very much. Thank you, Mr. Madden and staff for giving us a document that would generate a lot of interest and, I'm sure, some discussion. Job well done. We anticipated we were going to, at some point in time, be impacted with our COVID recovery, and we came out last year. I could use the term smell like a rose on some of it, but we knew we would swing the downturn somewhat here. So I know it's been challenging. I appreciate all of you working together as a team. Our structure of government is set up, so each one of your departments represented by a chair on this council. So be sure you have open and frank discussions with them, along with our city administrator. Be sure that everything gets heard, and as you begin to make compromises, we appreciate that. Living within our means is something we all have to do. Appreciate all that. Thank you. You've already asked for council request, hearing none. Always, if you have those, get them to Mr. Madden. Two weeks from tonight, we'll go again. Hopefully, we can have that session upstairs in media room instead of in chambers. It tends to get a little more informal. And I like that setting better anyway. Hearing none, if there's no objection, we will stand adjourned. Box three, six forty-five.